Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I want to welcome those that are joining us online, those on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you that are here in person. We're certainly delighted that you're joining us today. We'd like to remind you, when you walked in, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to do so, so you can follow along with the meeting today. And if you're curious about any of the supporting documents we have access to, as we're making decisions on each of these items, you can always access that at sedgwickcounty.org. Lots of information there. It makes for a good read. I've got a great meeting today. A lot of people we're going to honor, so I'm going to get us right to work. I'll officially call the meeting to order for Wednesday, August the 6th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation, to be led by Reverend Bev Baumgartner, College Hill United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. My name is Bev. I am Associate Pastor at College Hill United Methodist. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm really glad to be with you this morning. Let us pray. Gracious giver of life and breath, we pause to acknowledge your presence within us and among us this morning, in the air we breathe, in our hands and feet and hearts. We meet on land long sacred to the Kiowa and the Wichita and other native peoples, and we ask you to open our minds to questions that need asking, to concerns that deserve time and attention, to under-resourced residents of Sedgwick County worthy of every human right and privilege. Call to the attention of these leaders, dear Lord of love, the priorities that will best serve the common good, the principles that will support equity among people. May justice and mercy and kindness prevail in today's deliberations, that your loving will may be done. Grant these leaders peace and courage, that they may offer you and one another their best work and highest selves. God of all joy and goodness, thank you for the rising of another day, for the gift of life itself. May these gifts not go unnoticed. May these simple gifts transform our awareness and open us ever deeper to the sacredness of life and the possibilities of love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Baumgartner, thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it. Please give our best to College Hill United Methodist Church. Thank you. We appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcement.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Very excited that today is full of county good news. We're going to start off with Chantel Crossman. She was recently honored by the Wichita Business Journal as a woman who leads in technology, innovation, and education. Chantel is a web architect, and you can see much of her work on our website at sedgwickcounty.org. Chantel partners closely with Strategic Communications and other departments to resolve accessibility issues and bug fixes. We're extremely proud of the work Chantel does and want to congratulate her on this distinction. She is here today to say hello, and if you have anything for her?
Yes, Chantel, please come.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate this award, and I couldn't do it without my coworkers. I definitely have a big support system in the IT world, so thank you to all my coworkers as well.
Yeah, well, congratulations, Chantel. You're kind of a unicorn. You can do a lot of different things. Obviously, the new websites that we just debuted just a few months ago, your fingerprint is all over that website. We've met on several occasions as you walk us through these things, and you are a true asset to this organization and this community, and this honor is well-deserved. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up in county good news is recognizing Julie Simpson as the International Association of Emergency Managers, Region 7 Emergency Manager of the Year. This award recognizes her dedication, skills, and significant contributions to the field of emergency management. We're all glad she's here today to not talk about weather, but we do want to thank her for all she does, and congratulations.
Yeah, Julie.
All right. Good morning. I just want to say thank you. I get a lot of opportunities to lead my fantastic team of volunteers to do some great things in the community. This being a peer-nominated award through Region 7, which is Missouri, Nebraska, Iowa, and of course Kansas, really means a lot, especially not having a disaster to talk about. So, I just want to thank you and look forward to just doing what I keep doing.
Well, Julie, it's pretty, you do what you do, and again, over, it's fantastic, and things are under control, communicate so well, and we enjoy celebrating you and your team for the work that you do. So, again, another award, another that is very well-deserved. So, thank you for all you're doing for this organization and this community.
All right, thank you.
All right. We're going to take the opportunity to introduce our next round of hometown heroes, if you guys would come up to the podium, please. Joining me is Mary Mattingly and Captain Matt Nance. I will introduce them individually and why they were named hometown heroes. We'll take a moment to watch their aired news segment, and then they'll have an opportunity for comments after.
Okay.
So, we will kick it off with Mary Mattingly. She is a retired lieutenant of the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, who still dedicates her time and talent to serving children, especially through law camp.
And now, it's time to honor our local hometown hero.
Mary Mattingly got her start with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office back in 1993 as a second shift patrol deputy.
What the job really is, is finding out what do people need, whether they're the victim, they're, I mean, they're suspect, they're just part of the case.
It's something she ended up doing for 28 years.
I mean, I really feel like it's important for people to take the step back and serve others for the right reason, not because you want to get something for it. You're doing it because it's the right thing to do.
And that's why Mattingly spent a lot of her time working with children, especially in the Exploited and Missing Children Unit.
Children are truly, truly victims, because a lot of times, they can't advocate for themselves.
It's also a part of the reason why Mattingly has been involved in what's called Law Camp since the 90s.
That was a really great opportunity, really stressful, but really great opportunity to be able to be on the side that was trying to make the positive impact, or trying to help, trying to make a difference for all of those children.
From working with children from back in the 90s to still helping them even today, that's why Mary Mattingly is this week's hometown hero.
Cake and the Wichita Wind Surge are proud to honor Kansas first responders with hometown heroes.
Mary, welcome. We're glad you're here this morning.
Thank you for having me. You know, I'm humbled, I'm honored to have that. During my 28 years with the Sheriff's Office, I did start as a second shift patrol deputy, and I did my first law camp in 1996.
Wow.
Participated for 22 years of my 28 years. And when I retired as the Investigations Captain, I was in charge of the camp. It's a great honor to kind of bring that back. It's a hybrid version, but children are the future, and it's up to all of us to step up, do what we can to help the future. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Again, a wonderful honor. How long have you been retired from the Sheriff's Office?
Four years, almost five. It'll be five at the end of the year.
You want to come back? It seems like you...
Well, you know what? I have to say, this is less stressful. My husband also retired from the Sheriff's Office the same day I did, so...
Wow, incredible.
Nice to have a break.
Yeah, thank you for all you do. Law camp is a big deal in this community, engaging our young kids into what it is that law does, what it is that public safety does, and just acclimating to all of these things. It's really important that you're serving in that capacity. Thank you. And the Missing Children's, Exploited Missing Children's Unit, and all the work that you did there, it's heavy. It's incredibly heavy, and the work that you do there is, we simply cannot say thank you enough. So, this type of hometown hero, you are absolutely a hero for your service to this community, and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Our next hometown hero is Captain Matt Nance. He was named the 2024 Firefighter of the Year, and the first training, it is the first training officer for Fire District 1. He was, he recently had the honor of starring in a Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers training video, and we will take this moment to watch his video.
Sedgwick County Fire Department Captain Matthew Nance has been pretty busy lately. The 2024 Firefighter of the Year has been with the county for over 20 years now, but he's in a new position as fire training officer.
Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1 is in an exciting moment right now.
Part of his job also includes looking over 130 firefighters, some brand-new, some have been there for decades.
So, my big goal right now is to build fire training shorts, to bridge the gap from the academy to some of our older members on the department.
That includes videos, manuals, or even just conversations with different positions to make sure that everyone is on the same page. These are all just part of the reason why Nance was the 2024 Firefighter of the Year.
What's neat about it, I was nominated by my peers, and the peers saw the work that has been put into this, and they felt like it was appropriate to nominate me for Firefighter of the Year.
And meeting expectations. It's also one of his favorite parts of the job, including hearing any feedback on his trainings.
I was able to utilize that skill to maybe help a citizen, or even save a life or property. I would say that's probably the best part of my job.
Captain Nance, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you so much for the recognition this morning. I can't say it enough that most of the board members on this board approved my position about a year ago, and the 70 years of the inception of the Fire District, we haven't had a fire training officer, official fire training officer. So, this is a very exciting time, just like I stated in the video, for fire training and put fire training first, because at the end of the day, when we have a well-trained, well-rounded firefighter, that's where we meet the expectations of our citizens. And that's what I'm most excited about, is to actually exceed the expectations of our citizens. And when I get the opportunity to influence, persuade, and lead and guide our firefighters every single day, all 130 of them, it's exciting for me. So, I really appreciate the nomination, my continued support from my command staff and from the Commission. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good, Captain Nance. Couple comments quickly. Commissioner Meitzner.
Morning, Matt. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think I would have realized a year ago that your uncle was Jim, I might have paused on approving your promotion.
Yeah. Whenever someone asks me if I'm related to Jim Nance, I have to ask the stories, all of that before I approve. Yes, sir.
I've heard, yeah, I get it. Anyway, sincere congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Captain Nance, you do a fantastic job, and you know, you were doing a lot of training prior to being officially recognized as the Training Officer. This is something that you excel at. You're an effective communicator. I've been to a few of the fire, the academy graduations where you speak at. You're exceptional in what you do. Your peers have acknowledged it. They made you the Firefighter of the Year. We're in real, we're doing things in the Fire Department, Sedgwick County Fire Department, that are really unique, and you're right in the middle of it, not just in your position and the training and the equipping, but also what we're talking about now in regards to a new fire training center and what that looks like, and your leadership is really inspiring on a lot of levels. So, I just want to thank you for all the work that you do, and you are a hometown hero. We thank Cake News, and we thank Wichita, recognizing people in our community that work, that... Sir, congra-
... opportunity to do a quick... ........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... of Spirit for your, your collaboration and your partnership on this project. Thank you.
Good, good, Commissioner. Appreciate that and I would echo that I'll happily support this. I think the case was made quite clearly from our county engineer, from management staff, from staff at Spirit. Obviously, he's the largest employer here in our area. We want to make sure that this partnership, that the people that are on your campus remain safe. And if anybody's been on that road on Oliver, we know it is busy. There are people moving in a lot of different directions. So this is equally about partnership as it is public safety and making sure that we're at the table. So thank you for the invite to be at the table. Thank you for your participation in this and all that you guys do for our community. We are certainly grateful for the partnership with Spirit. So, okay.
Honored to work with all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here today. Sam, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments on public, public agenda? In case seeing none, I'll make a motion to receive and file public comment. Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 9, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, we're looking at meeting minutes. Looking at items A, B, and C. All Commissioners were present, so unless there's objection, I'd like to combine into one motion, items A, B, and C. Okay, I'll make a motion here real quick. All right, I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 9th, July 16th, and July 23rd. Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, proclamation declaring National Health Center Week.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, I'd like to read a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas for nearly 60 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative healthcare in our nation's medically underserved communities, having a significant impact on America's healthcare systems. And whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for over 32.5 million Americans in over 16,000 communities across the country. One in every 10 people in the United States gets their care at a community health center. And whereas, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, nutrition, and pharmacy services to provide comprehensive care, allowing each patient to thrive. And whereas, community health centers are locally operated nonprofit organizations that power local economies by generating $118 billion in economic activity and supporting more than 650,000 direct and indirect jobs nationally. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan Beatty, and the Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize August 3rd through the 9th, 2025, as National Health Center Week. And we recognize Hunter Health, GraceMed, and HealthCor, the three federally qualified health centers in Sedgwick County for their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare systems. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I'll make a motion to approve it as read. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is Amy Feimer, the CEO of Hunter Health. Amy and team from Hunter Health, welcome. We're glad you guys are here today.
Yes, thank you. And actually, I have Dabna Gold from HealthCor and Nancy Dueling with GraceMed. So all three health centers were represented this morning.
Great.
On behalf of the community health centers, I just wanted to thank the Sedgwick County Board of Commissions for this proclamation this morning. Since the first health center was founded in 1965, community health centers have understood that where we live, work, worship, and play are critical to our health and well-being. And with roots in the civil rights movement, the visionaries who founded the earliest community health centers believed that we could fight poverty and empower communities with health and opportunity.
Hi, Nancy.
Hello, thank you. Today, community health centers play a vital role in enhancing success, access to essential primary care nationwide. We increase access to crucial primary care by reducing barriers such as cost, lack of insurance, distance, and language. In Wichita, the federally qualified health centers have been instrumental in serving over 80,000 individuals annually, providing a comprehensive array of services, including primary care, dental, behavioral health, vision, and pharmacy services. Every August, we seek to increase the awareness of the nearly 1,500 community health centers nationwide.
Beautiful.
This year, the theme of National Health Center Week is celebrating 60 years of progress. Community health centers in every state, U.S. territory, and the District of Columbia serve as a beacon of strength, service, and care in our community by serving all, regardless of their ability to pay. As we celebrate our employees, board members, and supporters, we want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners for their recognition and support of the significant contributions made by community health centers in Wichita. Thank you.
Yeah. Wonderful. I, I just want to say that I think it's incredibly important and symbolic that representatives from all three federally qualified health centers are here this morning. There is collaboration happening and I can acknowledge two things that I'm seeing mainly in my district that are happening where there's significant collaboration. The first is at 29th and Grove and the treatment that is happening for those that have health concerns. All three of your FQHCs have stepped up in an incredible way and met the gap and I just want to thank you personally. I want to thank you for the people in my district and those in this community that have been dependent upon your services. And the second is what we're doing right now at Second Light with our homeless services. Again, all three of you are at the table. You're helping us shape the health outcomes and it is quite remarkable to see. And we've heard several people comment that the collaboration that's happening on that project in particular is something that hasn't happened on this scale here in this community. And again, it's our FQHCs that are leading these conversations. So we are happy to celebrate with this proclamation because of the work you do. And I heard Nancy, 80,000 people annually through your guys' clinics. You're meeting a gap in an incredible way and contending for the people that need your help. So I just want to thank you publicly. We're happy to celebrate this proclamation and, and all that you do in this community. So, thank you. Okay, if everyone will give us about five minutes, we want to take a break. We want to go out and take some pictures out here in the atrium to celebrate this proclamation and those that we honored here this morning. Five minutes, we'll be right back. Okay, thank you for allowing us to take a quick break to celebrate all those individuals that are here today. Wonderful proclamation and hometown hero thing is wonderful too, so. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments.
Mr. Ragnus.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Waggoner, County Counselor. If it's okay with the board, I suggest taking up items E, F, and G altogether. They're all appointments, recommended appointments to boards by Commissioner Wise, their district and county commissioner. Item E is a resolution appointing Tamara Roberts Blackwell to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board. Item F is a resolution appointing Brenda Brown to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. And item G is a resolution appointing Rachel Rivero to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. The recommended action is to adopt all three of those resolutions.
Okay, Justin, thank you. Commissioner Wise.
If I could make the motion to adopt the resolution for the appointments of, let's do this one at a time, the Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, and the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, it's a motion. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold is here to do swearing in for those that are here that are those three items. If you're here, you can head right over there to Kelly Arnold and he'd happily get you sworn in.
Gotcha.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. We'll start with you first. If you raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, so help me God. I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I currently serve as Ms. Will Chair America and as those duties come to an end, I wanted to focus on what issues we have in our community for the disability. And so, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, next one. All right, raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God. I do.
Congratulations.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
I just want to thank both of you for your time and willingness to serve on these very important boards. Not all Commissioners have the opportunity to have Ms. Will Chair America 2025 as their appointee. So I'm very proud to have you and just look forward to all of the updates and suggestions that you can bring to me. Brenda, I am so excited to have you for the Mental Health Advisory Board. Your reputation and your industry is very, very good. You have so much experience and knowledge that you're going to be able to share, so thank you for doing that for me. And then Rachel Rivero is my appointee. She's not able to be here today for the Aging and Disability Board. She is going to be an amazing appointee to that board as well. So I just feel so honored to have you guys serve. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community.
Okay, yep. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, Madam Clerk, on to new business. Next item.
New business. Item H, accept a donation in the amount of $300 for Sedgwick County EMS from Shields.
Yeah, EMS Director Kevin Landerman is here. Morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Kevin Landerman, EMS Chief. We are here to accept a donation in the amount of $300 for Sedgwick County EMS from Shields. We'd like to thank Shields for this donation. It was used to support our bike team. It came at a very good time. We had some bikes that needed to repair right before River Festival that they're heavily used during that time. And so that donation was, was used to repair those bikes so they could be used for River Festival. So recommended action, we'd like for you to approve the item and authorize Chairman to sign a thank you letter on behalf of Sedgwick County to Shields. And I do have Derek Williams, he's the Asset Protection Lead from Shields here, and if you'd like to talk to him and have him say a few words.
Yep. Derek. Derek, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Awesome, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Um, I have something for you. Sorry, got to bear with me.
Oh, you're fine, ma'am.
I just wanted to say at Shields, a community isn't just a word, it's part of who we are. We believe in supporting places we live and work because we're not just a store in the community, we're a family in the community. Whether it's giving back through donations, supporting local events, or simply being a place where people come together, we're proud to stand alongside you and we thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, Derek, thank you. Hold tight, real quick. Commissioner Meitzner.
Derek, thank you for, we haven't met officially, but I was at the city when you all were debating and figuring out how to get to Wichita and where to get to Wichita. And then I came over to the county after that. But I just want to thank you for, obviously, for Shields and the family for investing in Wichita. But you're doing what, what you all were talking about. I know you've invested heavily out at Stryker Complex and all over the community to support the community and it's duly noted and very much appreciated and you are all, you were people of your word on what you wanted to do. So I just wanted, and then this is very helpful as well. So my sincere thanks to you and share that with the, with the management, whatever.
Awesome. We appreciate you guys.
Yeah, Derek, and you, and Shields, Commissioner Meitzner is right. Shields is investing in this community. A lot of youth sports, we've seen you out at TRYC on the West Side too. You guys are very, very invested into public safety and our first responders. So this $300 donation, it, as Chief said, it resonates really well and it's symbolic of who you guys are in this community. So thank you again. Thank you for coming here today and representing Shields and for this donation.
Awesome, I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Derek, okay. Chief, thanks, sir. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $300 for Sedgwick County EMS from Shields. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, very good. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, presentation of the Sedgwick County Strategic Plan.
Okay, Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz from the County Manager's Office, here today to discuss and present the final version of the strategic plan. This plan is a culmination of about a year, year and a half of work with staff and our partners at the PPMC Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State to redraft, revise, and amend the 2019 strategic plan, which was put into place over, over five years ago. I will introduce her in a second, but Sarah Gooding is here. She is from PPMC and we'll talk about kind of the process of what it took to get us to this. And I want to acknowledge Jane Link for her work on this from the inception of the project all the way to the culmination. Big month for Jane, she's had a birthday yesterday, I think, right? And then she's retiring at the end of the month, so it's a, my heartfelt thanks to her for her work on this. The strategic plan you have in front of you and that will be posted around the organization contains five themes, which we have discussed in staff. The Commission helped formulate this strategic plan, but for the public, I'll mention the five themes. Number one is service and resource optimization. Number two is workforce and culture. Three is technology. Four is communications. And five is public trust. Under each of these themes is a goal, a series of strategies, three or four strategies. And then the important part to me is there is a series of key performance indicators under each of these strategies which help us to form budget. They will go on our website so that people can hold us accountable for what we are promising to do through this strategic plan. So it's an incredibly important document to guide the organization over the next few years. It is a fluid document that we look at frequently. When we crafted the last one in 2019 into year two, as we were all motivated, we had COVID and that strategic plan got put on a shelf for about a year and a half while we were crisis managing. This one, hopefully, there's no crisis coming up and we can keep it fluid, keep it active, and discuss it frequently. Sarah, I would like you to come up and kind of talk about how this, how this plan got put together.
Hey, Sarah, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tom, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. As Tom said, I'm Sarah Gooding. I'm with the Public Policy and Management Center and I've served as the project manager for this project. Again, I want to thank Jane. She has been an incredible resource, keeping things on track, communication back and forth between. And we've had a lot of moving pieces over the last 10 months or so as we've been actively engaged in this process. So we began last fall by revisiting the 2019 strategic plan that this plan is based on and continues. The 2019 strategic plan divided work and goals by eight different division areas. And so we re-met with leadership from across those eight divisions to identify what has been achieved, what hasn't been achieved. As Tom said, a lot of unanticipated things have happened since that plan was published and adopted. And it was incredible to get to hear how much has been achieved despite the challenges. At the same time, it also allowed us to drill down and understand what work remains from that plan. And so we came back with a theme report from those early engagements that we've then worked over the first half of this year to refine down to the five goal areas that Tom discussed. So through the early part of the year, we had a lot of different engagement tracks going. We had the opportunity to conduct interviews with each of the five commissioners, each of the elected and appointed officials within the county. We also conducted focus groups with two local government organizations. One focused on mayors and electeds, one focused on managers. We met with two regional business leadership organizations, four officials with the State of Kansas who represent areas that interface with county services. And then we also came back around and conducted plan formation development with seven different work groups. Those were an opt-in opportunity for your mid to upper level leadership through the county. Through those, we drilled it down to the five goal areas that are in the plan that's being presented today. And then we turned around and we met to, with about 50 employees from across the organization to refine and get additional input into those goal areas. So the goal in all of our strategic planning processes is robust input to feel like people have been heard. And so the resulting plan takes all of that work and brings it into the five goal areas. And I will say, these are challenging goal areas. Again, they're the remnants of the past plan. They are goal areas that are continuing or amplifying work that has been done and they are going to require a lot from your leadership to lift and move forward. The KPIs are a strong indicator of your leadership's willingness to be accountable to those goals, to the public, and also within your budgeting process. Additionally, to continue this work forward, one of the final components of this plan was to develop a strategic planning template that will help guide each of your department areas through their own strategic planning process. That's an efficiency measure that helps them to do it in their time, but they have process guidance to do so. And there's a second template that also guides the creation of key performance indicators at the department level. Again, this is very challenging work to try to understand not only how are we going to make progress, but how are we going to measure and be accountable to that progress? And so I just want to congratulate your organization on taking on this challenge and your willingness to, to take these steps forward.
Sarah, thank you for that. Tom as well, and Jane. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, the, the, the five goals that are outlined in this plan, is this an amendment to the 2019 plan or is this replacing the 2019 plan?
I would consider it an update. Functionally, it's a replacement or a continuation. So rather than the 2019 plan, which was designed to really set goals for work areas, this sets countywide thematic goals that emerged from, from the work that had been done and the work that remained to be done.
The reason I'm asking is because the plan that, the plan that's currently posted online, it starts out the Sedgwick County Mission. In fact, we had a public hearing just the other day, last Wednesday, we had a public hearing and one of the speakers actually read to us the Sedgwick County Mission. It says cultivated healthy, safe, and welcoming In fact, we had a public hearing just the other day, last Wednesday, we had a public hearing. And one of the speakers actually read to us the Sedgwick County mission. It says, "Cultivate a healthy, safe, and welcoming community through exceptional public services, effective partnerships, and dedicated employees." I think that's really important, to have that stated. And so I guess I don't see a reason why we did not have a copy of the whole plan with these five goals added to it, where they fit. Because right now, I'm not sure what of the old plan is is continuing, which one of the which part of the plan is being replaced. I don't know if that makes any sense. So it sounds like what we're doing is we're, by updating this, we're replacing part of the plan, but not the whole plan. So I'm a little bit, I'm just a little bit confused as to what part of the old plan remains.
Good morning. Jane Link, Division of Human Resources. Basically, the themes that are running through it. The mission, vision, and values were not touched. And they are not on, in the old plan, they were the front page. They still exist exactly as they were developed in late 2019. So those items, the executive team basically said, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna redo those. So what's continuing are more some of the themes from from the prior plan, but it's been reconfigured away from those kind of work team areas like public works and I'm trying to think of what some of the others were, but.
Yeah, there's there's human resources and communication and finance and technology. It's all broken out into separate pieces.
And I point out that there is another version that is what we call a long version that's developed similarly to a worksheet that we can use to measure progress against our goals and document strategies. And I just posted it about 30 minutes ago. There's a tab, as you're talking about items you found, there's a tab under the front page of E-line, and the updated long version is out there that we will use going going forward.
I would view this as an update to the 2019 plan. As Jane mentioned, the mission statement has not changed. This is a clean, this is a three-page, clean, crisp document update, which I felt was important, not only for our workers, but for the for the public to understand how we're how we're moving forward with this plan. There will be attachments on this if you want to. There's a lot of work here for staff. And it gets, it drills down into that work to the attachment Jane just mentioned for staff, that will give them guidance on day-to-day work as we move forward. But this this document presents a cleaner plan that public can see. The KPIs will be clean in the budget book. A major reason we did this is we felt like, and I, Lindsay could talk to this as well, we didn't feel like we were meeting the standards of KPI within the budget book. This will get us there now. So I would view this, Commissioner, as an amendment to the existing document. I think we mesh both documents together. That's what will be online for the public to look at and witness as we go forward.
So as I, as I read the previous plan and I read this one, it's, I mean, it's a lot of really good stuff. The old plan wasn't bad. It's just 2019. But by replacing that with this, again, this is all really good stuff as well, it makes me miss some of the old stuff. I mean, I feel like it's also good, but we're taking it out. So I'm a little bit conflicted on on my embracement of this new this new document, because it's replacing actually another really good document, if you will. I, again, in my, as my, as I'm reading this one online right now, I'd say, what you're what you're telling me, this is a 16-page document. The mission, mission, vision, and values are articulated on page one. On page two, so page two out of 16, that sorts out general government being one of those eight, break, you know, break areas is broken down specifically. And then it takes you all the way to the to the end on page 16. So what I think I'm hearing you say is, we're replacing everything on pages two through 16 with these three pages. Is that the way I should understand this?
To a point.
I would also note, there are several supplemental attachments in the delivery deliverables we've submitted. One takes that 16-page document, incorporates the feedback we received in the reviews we conducted last fall. And so that's a continuity piece in the background documents. I think you'll also see some of that division level work continue in the department level strategic plans that are to be developed. And so that's a place where that review will flow forward. And so there there will be continuities, all the pieces come together.
Well, I would, again, I know you've done a great amount of work on this. You mentioned this started last fall. And I know we've had several meetings with staff, and we know we had a personal interview about, you know, as elected official, I was able to speak to you directly regarding the things I'd like to see referenced in here. And that was, and that was a good meeting. And I know we've had a couple of staff meetings, at least since then, to present kind of what we're seeing here today. Some of these questions I didn't think of earlier, and I apologize for not being more thoughtful, asking better questions perhaps before. I guess my my one frustration is that I wish we had a complete document today, because we're adopting this today. I don't have exactly what we're going to post online. It's not, in other words, you need to edit that to get it where you can post it. So I'm not, it's not ideal. Go ahead.
No, that's that's the completed document. The reason that mission, vision, and values were the front page before, it was because they were brand new then. And they actually are a separate, they stand independently. We use them independently for other things. But that's the final. And then there's a second final that is more fleshed out. I think it's 10, at least 10 or 12 pages that have next steps built in. It shows who's owner of these areas. So they're they're finished.
Commissioner, we'll we'll package this all together on the website in such a way that the public and commissioners and staff will clearly be able to see what has been established historically, what this amendment means. We'll package this together completely. And then we'll get Commission the summation of that after this meeting. As I said, this is a fluid document. If we need to go back and modify and change, we can. But we will, we will continue to move.
And to me, that's the comforting part here. Again, if we decide to go forward today, knowing that this is fluid, we say it's fluid, and I think we've always said that, but it's hard to come back and do more work on this, you know, two months from now, if we decide we want to change something. I just don't think there's going to be a lot of appetite to make that change, but.
You can see more of the fluidity when you look at that longer worksheet version that I'm talking about. And yeah, we can tweak it, we can flesh it out, however you guys choose.
My memory apparently is failing. Do you remember about how long it's been since we had this presented to us at a staff meeting? It's been a month?
Six weeks, five.
Okay, so in that timeframe, really, that's the first time we saw this document in its current form, I believe. In that timeframe, has this been presented to the different citizens advisory boards?
No.
Okay. Is there a, is there a need to do this adoption today necessarily?
No, I don't believe so.
This is receive and file?
Yeah, to receive and file.
If we do receive it and file, are we, are we adopting the change?
I think we're moving forward with it. I'd be glad to go to, or staff will be glad to go to the district advisory boards and bring them up to speed. Again, I say, this is a fluid document that can change and modify in midstream. We expect it to. So be glad to go to the to the district advisory board. Sarah, did, when we were doing the research and all the outreach, the months and months of outreach, did we talk to district advisory board specifically?
We did not. We opted for some of the state-level interviews instead.
We can, we can take it back to district advisory.
I just think that before this becomes like the official final, in other words, we say we're done and we'll move on to other things, I don't, I just feel like we're missing a step here. And I just would like to see some citizen engagement. In fact, on on the third page here, top of the page, it says the goal is grow trust through consistent community collaboration, transparency, exceptional public services. It's ironic to me to say grow trust through consistent community collaboration, but we've not actually had them see this document and respond.
So there have been community groups and that have reviewed it. And the external stakeholder report is posted out on the strategic plan tab. And it summarizes the conversations we had with state agencies, with a lot of the constituencies that Sarah mentioned. So there's an, there is a detailed external stakeholder report posted. So we did go out, not to your advisory board, but we went out.
Okay. Well, I, I think I would be, since there are citizens advisory boards, it would be a good document for them to take a look at. I would think that's, again, in the way we use this document, please clarify, Tom, is our, is our directors and agencies do their work. They reflect on these values and these goals. And then, of course, there's KPIs that are collecting, if you will, how well we're doing according to these goals. So we're going to be held accountable to those things. And so this ought to be a driving document on how we conduct policy for Sedgwick County. I mean, this is important.
Yeah, that is correct, sir. And the expectation of department between now and Q4 of this year is to go through this document, revise, or in some cases, create a strategic plan at their department level that will nest under this document, which will also be transparent and open to citizens. So if you want to drill down as a citizen to see what's going on in, you know, com care, for example, they will update, revise their strategic plan, and then we want that done before the end of the year. So the goal is that each department in the county, all 48, will have some type of strategic plan which nests under this, which we do not have today and never have had historically. So there's other work to be done on this.
Another suggestion might be that if if you adopt this, we can go out and have dialogue sessions with your district advisory boards about what's in it, what our next steps are going to be, how they can be engaged. Because if we take them out, if we take this out to the boards and we have massive revisions, we'll need to do a new contract with PPMC. They've, they have completed their, and we certainly can do that, but they have completed their work and produced all the deliverables, so.
Do agree. We go out, we can go out to whatever group the commission wants to go out to and talk to. I don't think there'll be massive revisions, but there could be ideas, and it's worth listening to. And it's worth having people understand, rather than I expect them to go read online, to visit with them personally. I'm more than glad to talk about this public, this document publicly.
And if I could follow up on that just for a moment, excuse me for interjecting myself in your conversation. Lindsay Povisso, you're CFO. So there is some timeliness to this. We have spent months getting this feedback from employees, from the public, SCAC, other folks. The goal is to have these individual departmental strategic plans stood up, really, as Tom said, later in this quarter, and then spend the duration of quarter four developing key performance indicators. That is going to be a time-consuming effort. If you flip through your budget book at all, you will see that every single department has a strategic results section. Each of those requires two to three metrics. Right now, those are not up to best practices under Government Finance Officers Association standards. That has been called out when we have submitted budget books. And so our goal is, in the adopted budget that we produce in November, to have some more robust measures. So I would encourage the commission to at least consider this as a draft to start with and potentially revisit after your budget retreat next year if necessary. But we do want people to start submitting their requests, their business needs assessments, everything that's going to drive the 2027 budget within the lens of this strategic plan. That's where we're going to focus additional resources or streamline opportunities. And so I would just put that pitch out there from a more logistical standpoint as well.
Thank you. Just to be clear, though, we're just receiving and filing today. Will we need to adopt this before to meet what she's talking about? Do we need to adopt the document?
So we will need something right now that your strategic plan goes in the budget book. And then we tie that, it's a known independent section. We had taken it out of the recommended, knowing that this was coming. So what goes out in November will reflect whatever version of the strategic plan is in place. If you all do not adopt this plan, then it will be that old plan. But then the strategic results that our departments are working on and developing and the departmental strategic plans that they're doing will not align.
So if, from my understanding, is we are going to see this coming before us again in the next two weeks or month or whatever for, no, Jane says no. I just want to make sure that we we are going to adopt something at some point to meet what she's talking about, to replace that plan in the budget book. We need to adopt something. And one question is, when's that going to happen?
I think what's important today is we receive and file. We finalize this, we'll bring it back for adoption before Q4.
Okay.
And that way, we're all on the same page. And we'll combine it in such a way that the commission can see the entire document.
I'm good to go then. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I found this conversation rather interesting. I think that what you could do is come to each of us commissioners, because my colleague who's speaking on behalf of us that have advisory boards doesn't have an advisory board. So I appreciate you suggesting what our agenda should be, but I think you can come to each of us in in determined, because I know a couple of advisory board, a couple of the commissioners are contemplating how often to meet, every other month, and something like that is, I think there's been a lot of public engagement. And and so I'm very supportive of of the receive and file. And I think you could visit with each of us and put it back on the agenda for an up-down vote in the near future. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
I'm sure he's talking about me. So just to be clear, I have a collaboration board. You can call it whatever you like, but I have different type of people who serve on that board. I have members of the of the cities and the the schools and the townships and improvement districts sit on that board, as well as a couple of citizens at large. And we do meet, and we do talk about policy. It's called a collaboration board. It's not the same as a citizen advisory board, because I chair this meeting. And we've had a number of them already this year, and we'll continue to do that. So please, I don't, please, I don't accept that criticism. I think there's at least, some commissioners do it every other month, some commissioners do it once a month. I believe there's a commissioner that may not even have a board yet. So if you want to be critical, I don't know that I deserve that criticism. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I apologize for, if I take it a criticism. You're using the word district advisory board. That's what you're using. And so that's all I was clarifying was.
Well, my question was.
I don't want to, personally, I, I'm not in favor of delaying this based on agendas and scheduling for district advisory boards, collaboration boards, whatever, whatever board you're talking about. I think it's, you can visit with each of us commissioners, get a feel for, to bring it back or not, whenever, or if one of us wants to put it on a public agenda with their, whatever board that that you call on them, and that's fine, too. So thank you.
And to be clear, once again, I did say citizens advisory board. I'm not asking about the collaboration board because I'm there. I'm not, I'm not confused about what happens on my board. I'm asking about what happens on other people's boards, I'm not there. And so my question, my question does make sense. And I guess my concern is, is the public has not seen this document. This is a guiding document to how we conduct business in Sedgwick County. And the public that we serve has not seen it. It's not been posted online. We've had some select groups have had a chance to see this, but our our citizens advisory boards, which is supposed to represent the people in our district, have not seen it yet. That's my, that's why I have a concern. And yet, in the, in the document itself, it says we will have consistent community collaboration. And we're about to adopt, essentially, adopt a document that has not been seen by the public. That's my concern. I think it's it's a fair concern. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate the work, Sarah, Jane. Thank you. Tom, Lindsay, the entire staff, thanks for doing this. I did a lot of comparisons in our last staff meeting to the previous, the 2019 version. I really liked the goals. I'm very appreciative of the strategies and the KPIs. And we had a pretty robust discussion about KPIs and how they will evolve and how precise those KPIs are going to get over time. So I, I appreciate, I think this is a guiding document for, Tom, how you manage staff and how you do some of the things that you do. And I appreciate the commission's input in this and the meetings that we had. I think we need a strategic plan. I think you need a strategic strategic plan for 3,000 people that work for you in this county and all the important services that we do. So this is a really important piece of the puzzle, and I'm excited to support it. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Maitzer. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Hello, Hope. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I am Hope Hernandez, your accounting director, and I'm here to present the quarterly financial report for the second quarter 2025, which covers the fiscal activities for the second half of 2025 compared to that same period in 2024. Both the report and the presentation are prepared by the budget and accounting teams, so I want to thank them for their hard work in compiling this information. Just a reminder, this information is based on unaudited financial data and is subject to minor adjustments when we do our annual audit. You have each received a copy of the report, and it will be made available online for the public at the conclusion of the presentation. We begin by taking a look at our anticipated or forecasted results in terms of fund balance across the organization. In the county property tax-supported funds, the fund balance is estimated to decrease $1.2 million. This is due to one-time planned expenses such as the rough-in-lease and the district court backlog items that were previously funded through ARPA revenue in 2024. The non-property tax-supported funds are estimated to increase $5.3 million, and this is primarily due to a projected increase in charges for services in comm care due to the increase in the PPS1 reimbursement rate for the Medicaid fees. The Fire District is estimated to decrease $0.7 million, and this is due to a projected decrease in miscellaneous revenue, as they had sold some items for auction in 2024 that aren't there in 2025. So that's where it shows that decrease. The enterprise and internal service funds are estimated to increase by $0.9 million, and this is primarily due to a projected increase in revenues received in the work comp fund. So to summarize in total, there's an increase in revenue over expenditures of $4.3 million, leaving us with an ending balance of $231 million. We have five funds across the organization that are supported with a specific dedicated mill levy. That includes the general fund, WSU, aging highways, and bond and interest. This slide displays revenues by the dark line, blue line, and expenditures by the light blue line. And what you want to see is the dark blue line above the light blue line, which is what we see here. This slide follows the tax distribution calendar in which we receive tax revenues in January and June from the December and May tax payments. So you will always see an increase in the first half of the year, and then you'll slowly see that go down throughout the remainder of the year as we spend those funds. The increase in revenues of $13.6 million to $258.5 million is due to an increase in assessed value of 8.1% for 2025. And the increase in expenditures of $9.7 million to $161 million is due to an increase in personnel costs countywide and an increase in contractual is primarily due to costs associated with the rough-in-lease in 2025, which again, previously was funded through ARPA funds. So some key revenues in the county tax, county property tax-supported funds. The first one of note is the investment income. This has increased 7.8% through the second half of 2025 as a result of getting rid of some older investments that didn't have as good of maturities and as well as some strategic investment decisions. The ad valorem taxes increased 7.7%, again, due to an increase of the 8.1 in assessed valuation for 2025. But as you can recall, the commission took action to reduce the mill levy rate by nearly 0.4 of a mil, which has resulted in healthy property tax collections, but not as high as what your assessed valuation growth would have been. Sales and use taxes have increased five of the six months in 2025 for an overall increase for the second half of 2025. Motor vehicle taxes have increased 4.3% due to an increase in motor vehicle registrations. And other notable changes in the all other revenue section you'll see there, there's about a 4.6% decrease, and this is just due to a transfer of the ARPA replacement revenue that happened in 2024 that again, did not happen in 2025. Key personnel expenditures in the county property tax-supported funds. Personnel is the largest single expense within these funds, and so we segregate them out. And as a result of the efforts made over the last few years by this commission to make compensation more competitive, we are seeing an increase in the cost in terms of personnel and higher wages as vacant positions are being filled. So therefore, we expect to see salary, wages, and benefits increase, but at the same time, we see overtime is decreasing. All other personnel expenditures decreased 20%, and this again, is due to the sheriff's office. They have to have less callback or on-call due to those vacant positions being filled. So then overtime and the all other personnel expenditures are decreasing at the same Key non-personnel expenditures in the county property tax-supported funds. The first one is fees for service contracts. This has increased 29%. I'm sure, as you're aware, we are upgrading our financial system to a newer version of SAP. So this is the upgrade, the fees for the contract to upgrade that financial system. Grant awards increased 3%, and this is due to an increase in the amount paid to WSU for the, for the increase in assessed valuation. So as long as the assessed valuation is increasing, so will these grant award expenditures to WSU. Medical professional services decreased 7% due to a decrease in corrections in the second half of 2025, and this is just due to timing. Some invoices that they typically pay to the vendor for medical services would not receive until the third quarter. For the Fire District General Fund, this chart has some of the same dynamics in terms of revenue and expenditures, as you saw on the previous slides, in terms of the property tax collections that we get in the first half and then spending them throughout the year. So that's why you'll see revenue really high in the beginning and then expenditures getting a little bit higher throughout the year. Revenues for the Fire District Fund increased 0.9 million to 22.5 million, and expenditures increased 0.1 million to $12 million. The Fire District Key Activities, the increase in revenues of 0.9 million is due to an increase in assessed valuation of 9.5%. The increase in personnel is due to an increase in compensation in 2025 plus a 2% scale adjustment. The large decrease in equipment is due to fewer cash-funded vehicles that were purchased through the second half of 2025 compared to those that were purchased in 2024. And other notable changes, there was a decrease in auction proceeds, as I kind of had mentioned earlier, of some items that were sold through an auction in 2024 that were not sold in We will now look at the county's non-property tax-supported funds. The county has 31 operating funds that are not directly supported by property tax dollars, including federal and state grant funds. So as shown on the chart here, revenues, which are displayed by the green line, through the second half of 2025 were $84 million versus $52 million for 2024. So that's a $32 million increase or a 61% increase. And this increase is due to the revenue that was received for the state mental health hospital. Expenditures are displayed by the dark blue line through the second quarter of 2025 were $145 million versus $61 million for 2024, an $84 million increase or 138% increase. And this increase again, is due to a shopping cart being created, and when we create a shopping cart, it encumbers the funds on a budgetary basis, so they can't be spent for anything else, which therefore creates an expenditure. So this was for the state mental health hospital, which is funded through ARPA funds. This slide also shows revenue replacement and expenditures in the second half, but excluding those COVID or ARPA funds. Revenue is represented by the red line and was $61 million, which is an $11 million increase compared to 2024, and this is due to the revenue received for the environmentally at-risk testing, as well as that increase in comm care's billing rate that I mentioned earlier. Without COVID expenditures, there was a $9 million increase in expenses through the second half of 2025 compared to the same time period in 2024. This is due to an increase in grant awards, again, for that environmentally at-risk testing, as well as an increase in expenses for Mills on Wheels and the Department of Aging. Here we show the key revenues on a budgetary basis for the non-property tax-supported funds. So there is a very large number here, it's the 425%. This again, is the increase in the federal revenue state passed through. It's due to that one-time revenue in the form of an advance of $16 million from the state for the construction for the state mental health hospital. The 67% increase in the state revenue KDADs is due to a $5 million advance from the state for construction and a $1.7 million reimbursement for other expenses that are related to the construction of the state mental health hospital. The 21% increase in the PPS1 Medicaid fees is in comm care, again, due to the increase of the rate that they receive for the CCBHC services. And some other notable changes, state revenue KDHE increased 2.9 million, primarily due to revenue received for the groundwater contamination testing. Key expenditures in county non-property tax-supported funds. In salary and wages, you'll see a very small increase here, and it's due to the pay increases that are in effect for 2025. Employee benefits, kind of same deal here, the increase is in the health and life insurance premiums. Facility constructions, here is basically 100% change because there wasn't anything in 2024, but there will be in 2025. And again, this is related to the facilities construction for the state mental health hospital. And other notable changes, down in the all others, we had some administrative changes in comm care due to the way that they charge their rates for admin fees. Now we will move away from the budgetary statements and into the accounting portion of the quarterly report. This chart illustrates six years of historical trends of total fund balances, but on a GAAP basis. What the swings in this chart illustrate again, is the tax collection cycle. The spikes show the revenues that we receive from the distribution of taxes, and the dips in the chart, in the chart show where we are drawing down or using those funds. In Q2 of 2025, we ended with a general fund fund balance of $193 million. The general fund unrestricted balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures, this is a self-imposed county policy that we require a minimum of unrestricted fund balance to be 20% of budgeted annual expenditures in the general fund. In 2025, the general fund budgeted expenditures were about $333 million, and 20% of the $193 million fund balance is $66 million. So we are meeting that 20% threshold that we set by county policy. Now, this is an exciting slide to look at this time. As you can kind of see on the chart, noted by the yellow line is the benchmark, and then the darker blue line is the yield that we are receiving for our portfolio. So David Floyd, who is our investment manager, has been working really hard chasing this benchmark, as you can see on here, from 2020 all the way till now, and this is the first quarter that we've actually passed the benchmark. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. That's exciting news for the county. The value of the county's investment portfolio at June 2025 was $488 million. Approximately half of that is in marketable securities. The other half is deposited through local banks that are located in Sedgwick County, and all of these funds were secured on a competitive basis, so to secure a market rate of return to the portfolio. Investment income received this quarter was $5.9 million compared to $4.5 million same time period last year. And again, that benchmark that I indicated earlier, which is displayed by the yellow line here, is 3.9, 3.96%, which is the U.S. one-year T bill. That's what we kind of put our benchmark against. And then our yield for the portfolio was at 4.1%. So again, I want to thank David Floyd and Brent Shelton for all their great work in getting us out there, trying to find different strategies for investments, but as well as making sure that we're staying safe within terms of risk. Significant capital projects, so there's four on here. The household hazardous waste facility expansion, this one was completed in June of 2025. This project was, is to add 6,000 square feet to the facility to provide offices, a workroom, a break room, ADA compliant restrooms for men and women, and it also serves as a storm shelter and a new control station and sales area. The next project is the adult detention facility fabric dryer for the laundry room. This project is replacing the fabric dryers as the existing dryers became obsolete and had been in service for over 30 years. So they did their job there. An existing boiler was also removed from this project, and this one was completed in April of 2025. The next two projects have a couple of photos here, so I'll talk through that while you can look at the progress that was made. R370, this is the traffic signal installation at 47th and Oliver. This project included a new traffic signal for all four legs of the intersection of 47th Street South and Oliver Street, meeting current design standards. Replacement of the outdated span wire traffic signal not only utilized steel poles and masked arms, but also uses current technology for all components and provides for modern traffic detection options. The next project, R353, this is the ridge, road, shoulder, and ditch improvements. This project involves the construction of road shoulders and roadside ditches along Ridge Road between 53rd Street North and 69th Street North by the Arkansas River in northern Sedgwick County. The project will provide increased safety for the busy corridor. The space from 61st to 69th Street has been complete, and the entire project expected to be completed in August. So to end, I would like to go over some key points for, to end for Q2 of 2025. The county fiscal condition remains sound. We do again, have pressures outside of the county's control, such as global geopolitical risks, inflation and interest rates, and federal and state decisions. The county budget challenges or property tax reliance, so here, meeting community service expectations within communities' fiscal expectations with 2026 budget adoption coming in two weeks. The commission goal is to reduce reliance on property taxes, as well as explore alternative revenue sources in line with the strategic plan that was just talked about earlier. And then opportunities for shared services and collaboration with other local governments to gain efficiencies or to improve services that we offer here at Sedgwick County. So with that, I'm done with my presentation, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Hope, thank you so much. And again, to the entire accounting team, thank you for all the work you did on this, and the investment team within that for these wonderful returns. So commissioners, any questions or comments on the quarterly financial report? I don't necessarily have a question. I'd like a little bit of follow-up information on Slide 6, if that's okay, real simple. It's an impressive slide, and I don't expect anyone to have this information today. So if someone can just email me, I'd love to understand, if I can find Slide 6 again. If you could pull it up there.
Oh, yep.
That one, I don't have my readers. This is a significant number here to where we see salaries and wages that are up 10%. Benefits are up 11, but the overtime down 11, and the all other personnel expenditures down 20. So this is a byproduct of staffing stability and some of the investments that were made. If someone would just shoot me an email, and maybe if Jane was here, she'd probably know off the top of her head, all the HR folks are really impressive. I'd love to know the staffing changes from Q2 of '24 and Q2 of '25, where we're at then versus Q2 2025. I think that's a tale I'm hoping to continue, a theme we'll hopefully continue to see this overtime driving down the way it is. So if someone can just email me that, I'd like to see that data. Okay, any other questions for Hope? Okay, very good. Appreciate all the work you put into this. It's very, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'll make a motion to receive and file the quarterly financial report.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Maitzer. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July 31, 2025.
There he is, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of July 31. We have seven items for you today. Our first item is the bridge improvements. This is Project B 516, and this is for Public Works, and the recommendation is to accept the low bid from Claver Construction Company Incorporated, and it's in the amount of $847,503.25. Our second item is the on-call architectural and engineering services for various departments. Our recommendation is to accept the proposals from Haney and Associates Architects, from LK Architecture Incorporated, from Schaefer Architecture Incorporated, doing business as Schaefer Architecture, Spangenberg Phillips Tice LLC, doing business as Spangenberg Phillips Tice Architecture and SPT Architecture, and Tessare Incorporated. And these are at the rates quoted in the table and good for three years with two one-year options to renew. Our next item, item number three, is forensic software platform for the sheriff's office, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Magnet Forensics LLC in the amount of $57,110 for a period of one year. This period starts August 15, 2025, and will continue through August 14 of 2026. Item number four, products and supplies for correctional facilities for the sheriff's office. This recommendation is to utilize the State of South Carolina's NASPO Value Point Agreement, which is number 4400036123, and the State of Kansas Contract number 57179. And this is good through December 25, 2025, and comes with four one-year options to renew. Item number five is also for products and supplies for the correctional facilities with the sheriff's office, and this recommendation is to utilize the County of Sacramento, this is the Omnia Partners Contract, WA00046785. It's good through August 3, 2026, and has four one-year options to renew. Item number six is the multi-function divi- Item number six is the multi-function devices, related software supply, services, and cloud solutions for the treasurer's office. And this recommendation is to establish a contract with Access Systems. It's utilizing the Sourcewell Master Agreement number 112124, good through January 10, 2029, and comes with three one-year options to renew. Our final item for this morning is the Class V four-wheel drive standard cab long bed lube service trucks for fleet management. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Master Tech Truck and Equipment and then it's in the amount of $171,480. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions and I recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, seven items. Commissioners, any questions or comments? The board was busy. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July 31, 2025. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Joe, thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, I want to pause after a new business here. I want to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda on the Fire District. He spoke at the, it was the Shields gentleman who spoke, so he inadvertently signed up for that. So quick correction, but so no one has signed up for public agenda. We'll keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of July 9, 2025.
Okay, commissioners, everyone was present for meetings on July 9 and July 23. So without objection, I'd like to combine Items A and B. Seeing no objection, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of July 9 and July 23, 2025. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
There it is, consent agenda. Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom, Stoltz County Manager's Office recommending approval of consent items C, D, and E on consent agenda.
Okay, commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to approve consent agenda, items C through E. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Very good. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District? Okay, seeing none. Next item?
Executive session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District, so we'll officially adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One. Chief Chris, have a great day. Call us back to order for the County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman of Commission recommend approval of consent items L through double letter AI on regular agenda.
Okay, commissioners, the consent agenda item, we already handled discussion on Items O and P. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items L through AI. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Federal grants discussion.
Okay, I don't believe we have anything under federal grants discussion we need to discuss today. We'll keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay, commissioners, anything under committee reports that you'd like to share with the Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Okay, other, you'll notice on the agenda today that budget discussion was inadvertently left off. So if you have anything under budget you would also like to discuss publicly, we can do that under other as well. Commissioners, anything under other or budget you'd like to discuss? I would just simply say that yesterday was the primary election. I want to congratulate our election staff for yet another seamless election. They had over 225 election workers, 33 sites were active. Again, it was a primary, so not everybody, there wasn't, like District 6 for Wichita didn't have a primary election. There were only a few. I think District 1 was the primary election for Wichita City Council, May's had a sales tax question that did pass, and there were two USD 259 Board of Education seats, primary elections. But yeah, 93,764 eligible voters, so 27% of all eligible registered voters in the county. It was only a 6.6 turnout election, so that's a very low turnout. It's on par with the previous municipal primary, so I would hope to see a better turnout in the general, which is November the 4th. But to also acknowledge that we do need more election workers for the general election on November 4th. These people do wonderful service. It's very important. There will be bigger turnout for that general on November 4th. So if you want to apply online, essentialcounty.org, just go to the elections tab or call 316-660-7100. Again, we do need election workers. Start signing up now. Okay? Anything else under other? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have an executive session today. Correct, Justin?
Correct, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes. Is this the 20?
Give it one second. Timeout. We might, do you want to do?
Certainly. Chairman, I believe Commissioner Meitzner, the intent was to do, just for clarity, there's going to be two executive sessions, my understanding here. I believe the one, the 30-minute executive session was the one that the preference was to go first.
Okay.
We're going to do the 30-minute one first, followed up, we'll return, and then do one for 20 minutes.
That's correct, Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay. So this is the first one. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:10 a.m. for consultation with legal counsel for county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss an ongoing lawsuit involving Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:10 a.m.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll give the second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, everybody, we'll break. See you back here at 11:10.
Okay, 11:10 and we are back. There was no binding action taken in executive session. We do have a second executive session planned though. Commissioner Meister?
Okay, thank you Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess an executive session for 20 minutes until 11:30 a.m. for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss legal advice on contractual matters.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll give a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner White.
She says aye right over there.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Chairman Bay.
Aye. Okay, 11:30. We'll be right back.
And we're downstairs.
Okay, it's 11:30. We are back from executive session, the second executive session. There was no binding action taken in this executive session. So is there anything that needs to come before the commission? Seeing none, we are officially adjourned, 11:30. Have a great day.